I want to call the regular meeting to order of May 13, 2015. Do the roll call. Councilmember Clayton, yes. Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Councilmember Warner?
Hey, Joe.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Here.
Right now, I'd like to stand for a silent prayer or moment of reflection, please. All right, let's salute the flag, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. As to comply with open public meetings at Chapter 231 Public Law, 1975, adequate notice of this meeting has been provided in the following manner. The annual notice was forwarded to the Asbury Park Press, the Coaster, and the Star Ledger on January 2, 2015, and posted on the bulletin board the same day. All notices are on file with the city clerk. Right now, we'll have the public participation. May I have a motion to open the meeting to the public?
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Clayton? Yes. Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Councilmember Warner?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
The public is expected to conduct themselves in a proper manner. Any derogatory, abusive, or threatening statements will not be permitted. The chair will immediately rule such contact is out of order and after appropriate warning may terminate any further comments from the speaker. You have a three-minute time limit, and I ask when you do come up to the mic if you could please state your name and spell it for the record.
Jeffrey Seeds, Third Avenue, S-E-E-D-S. When they opened up Kingsley, I saw that what looked like bump outs. And I know that last August you voted specifically not to allow bump outs, and I wondered if you could explain what that is. I believe there's an explanation, but could you explain it to everybody?
Tony, you want to do it? You want me to?
Go ahead.
I had the same concern. I got a couple of telephone calls, a couple of emails, and I went down there and looked myself, and right now, there are bump outs. It's hard to, I wish we had a big chart for it or something, so at the end of the island, there's like, looks like a bump out, and then the little island continues. What's not done on the two streets, you can see Third and Second, is, if you go down to Fourth, which you can't look at, that island becomes wider and goes down, so there are no longer bump outs. That's the good part. The bad part is something we found out last month. In the 2002 agreement for the waterfront redevelopment, all the streets were being widened, but nobody accounted for if you own a building on, and right now, on Fourth Avenue, there's the bowling alley, there's the apartment building on the opposite side of the street, and there was two houses on Berg Street. Their steps are basically in the city's right-of-way. Now, to widen those streets means they have to rebuild their steps. So, again, we found out this last month, we don't know what we're going to do in the future. Right now, on Fourth Avenue, like I say, it's only the bowling alley, it's one apartment building. The two on Berg Street were handled with what I call common sense, it's like, we don't need eight-foot wide sidewalks, so do not widen the street, keep the sidewalks five feet. And those two homeowners were not told, you guys spend $20,000 of your own money to fill new steps. It's a question, and it's a dilemma, we're going to have to address from the 2002 agreement that nobody brought to our attention, that the original plans called for widening the streets. Right now, on Fourth, like I say, there's only two in the problem. Third, we might have Dr. Swords in the future, but there's very little. But once we get down to Second, First, and once we get down to Berg, between, I'm going to say Second and Asbury, where there's a lot of residential, it's something we're going to have to address, because if I owned a house on Berg Street, and I was living there for 50 years, and my sidewalk's been there forever, and I was just told, it's in the city right-of-way, it has been forever, well, now you have to rip out your sidewalk, and because you, now your grass is no longer there, now you have to build a retaining wall, so you're looking at a $20,000 to $30,000 bill to correct something like, nobody knew was coming down the road. So, it's something we became aware of last month, it's something that we will address. Right now, we're in Phase Three, and Phase Four will not be done until we solve this dilemma and we get into more populated area. But no, when I went down to Jeffrey, I saw the same thing, I said, we vote no on bump outs. They do look like bump outs, they won't be bump outs, because the islands will go down, and at the end, they will taper down, but they will not be bump outs. But again, it's like a question like, do we, how are you going to address it in the future? Those streets are already done with, we can't do anything because of the underground vaults that were put in place and are needed, but it's something that will be addressed before the next go-around of infrastructure improvements with negotiations between the city and I-Star and infrastructure. And, you know, there's been discussion at first, I said, we'll just take the money out of the infrastructure money, and I-Star said, no, because we don't want to do it, because then they don't want the liability, they did the repairs. So, we're kind of like butting heads, not physically, it's been no bad blood or anything, but it's a solution we have to come up with for the sake of everybody who's been living there. If you have a big apartment building with like 60-some units, and you're being told, hey, you got to put in retaining walls, new driveways and everything, that could be a big cost. So, bad news we found out last month, we will address. Thank you for seeing us, because I thought I was seeing things myself. Because we did vote no on bump outs. Thank you. Rita? Tony, did you want to add anything?
No, I had the same concern, basically. I was down there doing the fifth record for the mayor, going down there, and I had spoken to, you know, our engineering department, I spoke to I-Star's engineering department, they explained it to me. All right, then I met John down there later on, it was explained to us again by the engineers, because we all had the, had the basic idea that it was, that they were bump outs.
Okay, Rita?
Hi, Rita Moran, Eighth Avenue. I want to thank Mr. Nuccio for letting me know about that federal fair law, labor law. I don't think you ever read it. If you read it, you'll find out that comp time doesn't come until you work 40 hours a week, for one thing. You have to have an ordinance, you have to have, it's only for the hourly wages, department has, don't get it. You have to read that law. I was glad you let me know about it, because I never knew about it. But comp time, that is the one thing, that you're going to have to stop, and it's not your fault. You just started to be here, and it's just something you have to take care of. It also says that the word "may" is in there, you may, not must, but may. That's a very important word, "may," that means you could or you couldn't. "Must" means you have to. So, I think you better read that law, and you've got to do something about this. This is very important. You've got to put the pinball machine on the back burner, and you've got to concentrate on finance, because the next step down is junk bonds, and I don't think you want to be there with junk bonds.
That's two more steps down.
What?
That's two more steps down.
Okay. So, what do you think about that, Mr. Nuccio? Did you read the law?
I did read it, and I did get the, I did get feedback from our attorneys, and I have spoken to our fiscal monitor about it as well.
But do we have an ordinance about the comp time?
We have an ordinance.
We're supposed to have an ordinance, and you're supposed to have a public meeting about it.
No, we don't have an ordinance about comp time, and I'm not quite sure about public meeting, about comp time.
Go ahead.
Those are things I'll run by our city attorneys again.
So, are we going to do something about this?
I will definitely talk to our labor attorney about it.
I mean, you're thinking about raising taxes, that would eliminate it, if you eliminated that. That's millions of dollars.
I will talk to the labor attorney about it, Rita.
The labor attorney? I see where you're going to renew his contract. First of all, he broke the contract, because he has 35 hours in his contract, and the law says 40 hours or more. So, I mean, I don't know what kind of a labor lawyer he is, we don't know who he is, we don't know if he has office hours, we don't know where he's at. He's like the invisible man. And you're going to renew his contract? The contract's wrong.
He is not on staff here, all right, he's a contracted, hired attorney. He's under contract with the city.
So, you're going to do something about this? This is important.
I will have more discussions with the city attorney about it, with the labor attorney.
Telling you, you'd save a lot of money, you wouldn't have to raise taxes.
Lori Ross, Westside Community Center, 115 Dewitt Avenue. I know that we are awaiting a meeting with members of the council, and we are anxiously anticipating that meeting. We are developing our summer programming, and we absolutely will be doing this this year with volunteers. We're looking forward to partnering and collaborating with the city regarding providing recreational, educational, social activities for our youth. Summer is upon us very soon, and I know that we had a meeting with a couple of council members the beginning of the year, and we're still waiting for the next meeting to move forward on some real progress. I know that you, Mr. Nuccio, said that we could only meet with two council members, and I know that, thank you, Mayor Moore, for being willing to meet with us. The bottom line is however we have to do it, including in a closed executive session, workshop meeting, we need to figure out ways to partner, because we do have volunteers, by the grace of God, that want to provide solid recreational programs for the citizens and the children of Asbury Park, myself and the entire board, we are all volunteers. We are stakeholders here, and we're looking for some support from the council about moving forward. Also, with regards to the city's five-year consolidated plan, I do understand that the city may be getting some additional money through Westchester County, because they didn't affirmatively further fare housing, and they were in violation, so there's going to be a distribution per HUDNORC of over $20 million, so Asbury Park may be getting some additional money. Again, I think it's important to emphasize that money should be spent in an appropriate manner, and there are real penalties for the federal funding not being spent appropriately, adequately, or timely. So, in light of that, I know that the city may be getting additional money, the question is, what is the city going to do with that additional money? Number two, I am very aware that the city has received letters from HUD regarding a repayment for funding that was not spent appropriately a couple of years ago. I guess it was 2011. I know that based on numbers that I've seen, that may have occurred also in 2012 and 2013. So, the city absolutely, from the letters I received, has to pay back $151,000 because of money not spent appropriately. Of course, the Asbury Park Press never printed that, but those are real dollars that the city could be using to address the conditions in the city. So, my question is, what does the city stand regarding the repayment, and what is the city going to do about that? As well as I see that the five-year plan is on the agenda tonight, so I guess approved, I'm still waiting for a copy of that, even the draft form. I filed an OPA report, and I got 344 pages, to be exact, of information not relative to the five-year plan. So, we're really trying to get some answers, we want to partner, and those are the three questions for tonight.
Okay, I'll look into why we didn't get the five-year plan. All right, in regards to the additional money, all right, we're not, we have no determination at this point, all right, what we would do with the additional money, if in fact we do get it, as a result of the lawsuit, the pending lawsuit, all right, with Westchester County. In regards to the payback, you're absolutely right, there was a problem with 2011 funds. All right, we have contested the amount with HUD. All right, HUD's position is, at this point, all right, is that we don't pay it back until they can adequately, all right, look at all of the information that we've provided with them. All right, we don't know exactly how much is going to have to be paid back, all right, and this is going to be determined once they go through everything.
And the only thing I would add to that, Lori, is that Monday night's work session, the guy came and did the five-year plan, whose name I'm drawing a blank on, our portion of the repayment, I'm not sure what numbers you have in your head, but they're approximately like $50,000. It's not a tremendous amount that we're going to get from this $220 million lawsuit from Westchester. I'm just saying, it's a smaller amount than you think, because the minute we were like, oh, great, we're going to have more money for CDVG, and then he told us how much, which, as you know, running programs costs a lot of money, road improvements and everything else, so the $50,000, if we get it, there's no timeframe for it, it's nothing close to what I thought it would be considering the repayment.
Thank you.
My name is Dean Pyzick, P-Y-Z-I-K. I was just wondering about when the street performers permit will be available to street performers and the ordinance following.
So, I can take two 30 seconds on street performers, on the one who started it, and got a tremendous amount of feedback about it, all of which we took into consideration and I brought back to the council. We modified the street performer ordinance after getting so many comments about it, and we kept the hours being what they were, which is, which was very strong to street performers. What we did modify is that if you are asked after three hours by a business owner on the boardwalk or somebody else who's doing music outside, that you would move 100 feet. So, that's part of the street performer ordinance. If you're not asked to move, you don't have to move. If you're asked to move because somebody's putting music outside, then you only have to move 100 feet. The second part of it, it is an annual license that we had previously charged $20 a year for, and we are raising that to 50 a year.
When will they be available?
That's a good question. For if we pass the ordinance, which we're going to do, when's the earliest? Because everyone wants to be up and running. We'll work it out some way where you won't get a ticket. But I mean, I don't know legally, do we have to wait the 20 days? We can't declare an emergency.
The ordinance technically wouldn't go into effect until 20 days after its final reading, so it's scheduled for a second reading in two weeks, 27, and 20 days thereafter, is when the ordinance would be effective.
So, people can perform, and then we would have, we won't, we're not going to go after street performers for the 20 days.
All right, so we can perform until it's, we need it?
Mm-hmm.
All right, wonderful, thank you.
We could legally sell them the passes beforehand, couldn't we?
We still have an ordinance.
Okay, no, I don't want to break the laws, but no, okay, so I agree with that. You won't get a ticket, but after the 20 days, you will.
Okay, so we can, we can keep performing until it is out? All right, that's what I want to make sure of.
Yeah, this, we want to obviously have this before Memorial Day, but there was a tremendous amount of feedback about the street performer ordinance that I was, I was ill-prepared for.
Because usually, they make you have it by Memorial Day.
Right, yeah, nobody's going to, if you get something, then, then contact me. I don't, you're not going to get a ticket, but if you do, contact me.
Thank you.
My name is Linda Leahy, I live on Fifth Avenue. I have a question about the beautiful trees that were in front of the mini mall on Memorial Drive that they're renovating. I'd like to know what happened to those trees. One day, they were there, and the next day, they were cut right down to the ground.
Are they on city land?
I don't, they're on the other side of the sidewalk.
So, city, city right-of-way?
I don't know what she means.
I don't know either. I'm just trying to figure, because if it's not city land, then it wouldn't be us, but if it's city.
What mall are you talking about? The strip mall on, between Fifth and Sunset?
The strip mall.
That's something.
I mean, it's horrendous, those trees were like 30 years old, and they were beautiful. And Monday, they were there, and, and then the next day, they were gone.
Can we ask that to the planning board? Can we forward that to planning board and barber, since they gave them permission to do work? Was that part of the work?
I don't know, we'll look into that.
Right, okay.
Look into that tomorrow.
I don't know.
I'm sure it wasn't, you know, it wasn't city workers.
It's mind-boggling. And then the other thing about that strip mall, which is, is a real pain in the neck, when you're trying to pull out of Fifth Avenue from the west side, you cannot see down the road to the left because of all those cars that are parked out in the road, and I don't, I think that they should change that and make that parallel parking. That's not parallel parking, you know.
No, that's what you're.
So that you can see, because one day, there's going to be an accident there, there really is. People just, they drive crazy on that corner. So, you know, I wish that you could do something about it. They have parking lots at each end of the building. Another thing that they're doing, they're parking on the side by the railroad tracks where it says, no parking. They're parking there. They may not be there very long, but they're still parking there. So, I guess that's, that's about everything I wanted to say, other than this cars coming down Fifth Avenue instead of Fourth that are speeding, and nobody seems to care about that either, so. Anyway, those were the couple of things I wanted to say. Thanks.
Thank you.
Before we go on, I have a question about the street players. Tony, is insurance covering while, if they don't have a permit? If someone slipped a fall, or Fred, do you know it? Or something happened? Can we give them permission to perform, and then they're not covered on the beach?
They're currently using an ordinance that prescribes a process to get a permit. You're making some.
But they don't have a permit yet.
There's no reason why permits couldn't continue to be issued until such time as the ordinance is finally.
So, if they got a permit, they're good?
Yeah, we currently have an ordinance, we're just revising.
It provides a process for the issue of permits. All you're doing is changing the thing, and you're changing the length of time if they're asked to move to a location 100 feet away, but there currently is a process in place.
All right, thank you, just curious.
Is it covered? Correct.
Roger Staub, S-T-A-I-B, 87 Aggris Road, Perrinville, New Jersey. Far too often, public officials are known, better known for what they haven't done than what they have done. And I'm here tonight just to thank Councilman Warner for a prompt response to a suggestion in regards to a program that's state-funded for the kids. It's called Hooked on Fishing, Not on Drugs. The young lady that was involved, or is involved, as the coordinator of the program for the Division of Fish and Wildlife couldn't be here tonight, so I'm not really speaking for her on her behalf. I would just like to acknowledge the councilman for his prompt response, and also for a young lady whom I haven't met, that's Lisha Floyd, who's also involved from REC in working on the program and trying to get the program established here in Asbury Park. What a lot of people don't know is that Asbury Park is, has a fishing club, that's the oldest saltwater fishing club in the United States. So, it's a real nice fit for the kids here, and hopefully, that program will be a successful program, because it makes a lot of sense, teaching the kids a little bit more about the environment, about marine biology, and other things that, you know, it's a wholesome education. So, again, I'm just here to thank the councilman for what he's done. Thank you, folks.
Thank you.
And thanks for, for, what I did is I made a call out a couple of meetings ago, just for help with recreation, and we connected, and we're in the process of reaching out to the AP Fishing Club through Joe, to, to see if they have someone in their program to go through the training, so they could be the leader in the, in the city. Yeah, thank you.
Hello, Councilman, Mayor, Jerry Scrammer Longbranch. I'd just like a follow-up on the railroad station, the North Railroad Station parking lot, I believe it should be a federal fair instead of block doll. I was going to get a report on the house numbers. And then, a new problem I noticed was that people are nailing signs to the telephone poles, and the police officer should be directed, if people put a sign for a broad sale or anything for, on the telephone pole, they should just go right over and give them a summon. There's no need to put signs on the telephone poles. Am I too close? I'm sorry about that. And then, I was in Neptune today, and they have 15 mile an hour speed bumps in their 25 mile an hour zone, but they're like temporary rubber speed bumps, and I think we need them for Fourth and Third Avenue. I know the roads are dangerous now with all the potholes, but at least when they see those yellow and black things, they need to stay slow down. And then, they can't be that expensive, because they're all over Neptune, and I don't think they waste money over there. Joke, only a joke. And the other thing is, I was really concerned when you're driving up Third Avenue and you see not one, not two, but three citizen patrol cars on one block, the short block. They should be spread over the city, but they look like police cars. You don't need three idle, three-part cars that look like police cars sitting on one little street. Spread them around, so when people go around the curve and they see them, they slow down. And I just think that's about it. That's my input for today. Any feedback on the house signs or the railroad train station?
I've got plenty for you, Jerry. All right, the North Avenue Train Station, all right, the, all right, the North Asbury Park Train Station. All right, I did look into this, we did report back out on this several weeks ago, all right, on this here. All right, that, all right, at one time, was a thorough fair. It was open, all right, but all of the indication that we have, all right, is that that is private property, all right? Part of it is owned by PNC Bank, part of it is now owned by DNA. All right, we could not find where we can convey the property over to them, all right, but the deeds that we have show it as being part of, all right, the old North Asbury Train Station, all right, and as part of that parcel.
So, they pay taxes on all that property where the street is?
Oh, check and see. Well, actually, you know, I'd have to look it up, I can't guarantee you they're paying taxes, they are nonprofit there.
Well, with no excuse, I think they should pay anyway.
I will look in, I will look into that for you. So, that could be your question for the next meeting.
Okay, and what about the house numbers?
As far as the house numbers go, I did check with code enforcement today, all right, since March 1st, there were 124, all right, violation notices issued for no numbers on houses.
Okay, that's, I hope that makes a lot of money for us. Thank you.
Hi, Marilyn slash back resident, business owner. I just wanted to talk about a little bit of the chatter around town about an additional surfing beach on the jetty that is, I guess, Second Avenue Jetty, and wanted to see if there is some ability to put that on an agenda, to add a second surfing beach down at the beachfront. As a resident here, a surfer, surf shop owner, the culture of surfing at the Jersey Shore, just like you're talking about fishing, one of the oldest recorded female surfers in the world was recorded in Asbury Park, and we have a picture of her hanging in Langosta Lounge. So, the culture here, I believe, as a mother, a surfer, is to bring more families to the beach. We have a great surfing beach at the other end of town, but a surfing beach on Second Avenue would bring people closer to the amenities that we have, bathrooms, restaurants, stores, bring more families here with kids that surf. And just going to that beach, I teach surfing there to the Boys and Girls Club every Tuesday morning in the summer, and the culture here is growing. It's growing not only in Asbury Park, but all over the country, all over the world. But I think it is a great opportunity to get the youth in this community into a healthy sport that can give them the ability to spend time at the beach that is their own, as well as everybody else who goes there, and to grow in a healthy lifestyle in the summer. So, I don't know what that process is, but I would like to propose that that moves forward.
Yeah, I can give an update on that. And just for background, so Marilyn, and myself, and a bunch of other people in town, for like, going on over 10 years now, have been doing the surf lessons on Tuesday and family day at the beach. So, it's been a process of including, working with the Westside Community Center, bringing as many of our youth down to the beach to enjoy the resources possible. So, we had a conversation with Joe Bonge and Garrett Guyerson about that, and during that conversation, my main point was, the surfing beaches are too crowded. And their counter was, well, that beach there, which is the First Ave Jetty north in front of the casino, is more crowded with swimmers. All right, John, you were, was that your impression?
Yes, but the discussion we had with Guyerson Senior and Bonge was, the beach's south of the casino only, it was never about Second Avenue Beach.
Well, what, let's be, so, no, not.
South of the casino where the, where the outfall pipe is, and they were scared about the outfall pipe.
No, I thought we were talking about from the First Ave, it's really a First Ave Jetty, right? To the south, that hole, to the pipe.
Oh, okay.
Well, anyway, the point is that there was, it was busy, it was, it was busy. So, and I said, okay, but speaking with some people in town, the idea, there's two things that have brought it back onto my radar. One is that it would draw, you know, people to that area. So, and it could not, it could be more than a surfing beach, it could be like kayaks, paddle. It could be like kayaks, paddleboarders, surfers. It could be like an alternate activity beach. We'd draw people to that area, which would then like feed the boardwalk piece there. And then the other piece is with the replenishment that's happening in Lock Harbor, Allenhurst, and Deal, that's where I surf in the summer, in Deal because it's free. People aren't going to surf there in the summer. So if we opened up a beach, we would have the option to draw people that normally would be surfing in those areas, they're not going to do the replenishment, to draw them down to our beach. So I think there might be an opportunity this year to talk about it. So I would revisit that conversation if the council's all right with Joan Garrett, with no information.
Time, buddy.
Is everything all right with that?
Yeah.
And then what would be the process? Is that just a resolution? How does that happen if there was some decision made?
We already adopted the resolution that set forth the beach regulations for the summer season of 2015. I would think it would be as simple as a resolution to amend the one that we previously adopted to incorporate a new surfing or alternate activity beach.
Okay.
And if a determination is made, and a recommendation is made, the council will adjourn the meeting that's still prior to tomorrow. Or actually, it's right after tomorrow that they...
Right. It's still early in the season. Okay.
Great. Thank you.
Thanks, Mark.
Lou Parisi, Veterans of Foreign Wars and the Veterans Alliance, Asbury Park. Asbury Park has a great tradition in having ceremonies on Memorial Day to honor our fallen. And it shouldn't surprise us that this should be so, because all of our families have paid a price in sending their young men off to the wars that have engulfed our nation in the past 75 years. I'm sure that some of you may even remember the gold stars that graced the windows of those homes to indicate the mourning that had taken place for their loved ones. Some of you, not too many, I see, but some of you may even remember the losses, the staggering losses of World War II, where we lost 406,000 of our young men. And shortly after the Korean War, when we left 36,000 behind. And most of us, of course, have shared with me the emotional impact of going to the wall in Washington and trying to read through our tears the 58,000 men that lost their lives in that most divisive foreign wars in our nation. Nor were our present generations spared from these losses. For 7,000 of the present generation peers have lost their lives in the two Gulf Wars and in Afghanistan. And so this year, once again, our veterans and our city leaders and business leaders invite you to join us on Memorial Day at 10 o'clock at Veterans Memorial Park on Fifth Avenue, two blocks east of Main Street, for our Memorial Day service. And I think that Asbury Park has another distinction, in that on that same day, we honor not only those men that fought for our liberties abroad, but those men in Asbury Park who wear the uniform here at home and protect our lives and our property. And so at 9:00 on Memorial Day in Fireman's Park, we invite you to join our firemen in paying tribute to their lost comrades. And at the end of the veteran's service at 10:00, we have the privilege of honoring with our Policemen's Benevolent Association the two brother policemen who lost their lives in the line of duty. All of these men have given so much of themselves, and they ask so little of us. And all we ask you to join us with your presence and with your prayers that they all rest in eternal peace. Thank you.
Can I have a motion to close the public portion of the meeting?
Move it.
Second.
All in favor?
All right.
All opposed? Next item on our agenda is the Consent Agenda Resolutions. All matters listed on a consent agenda are presented collectively to the City Council and will be considered for approval with one vote. These matters are considered to be routine in nature, and there will be no individual discussion of these items. If discussion is desired by one or more council members as to the particular item or items, then said item or items shall be removed from the consent agenda and considered separately. The items on a consent agenda are Resolution 2015-58, Resolution authorizing a person-to-person transfer to plenary retail consumption license 1303-36-066-002 from Berkeley F&amp;B Leasing LLC to Asbury F&amp;B LLC. Item number 2015-183, approving special events and wedding applications as presented on May 11, 2015. Resolution 2015-184, resolution authorizing a place-to-place transfer, expansion of premises of plenary retail consumption license 1303-33-047-008 for AP 30 Property Holdings LLC.
That, the council's going to ask to be separated.
Resolution 2015-185, approving social affairs permit for Jersey Shore Jazz and Blues Foundation for an event on July 18, 2015. Resolution 2015-186, approving a social affairs permit for Coalition of Haitian Empowerment for an event on May 16, 2015. Resolution 2015-187, approving catering permit for D&amp;B Ventures LLC for an event on June 13, 2015. Resolution 2015-188, resolution endorsing the submission of the 2014 recycling tonnage grant application. Can I have a motion for all those resolutions except for 2015-184?
Move it. Second.
Quick. On 2015-188, it has a blank spot for a person's name. Who's that's a person's name? It says this person will be the person responsible for doing the tonnage request, and so I filled it. So how can I adopt a resolution without knowing who it is?
I don't know.
I don't know. And if you say, no big deal, you fill it in later, but I'm just...
Probably even coordinator.
Okay.
It would be Yvonne Adams.
Yeah, that's what I thought, too.
Is it? Okay. I just saw a blank spot. Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Councilmember Warner?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Individual resolutions. Resolution 2015-165, resolution authorizing the purchase of a 2015 Ford F-250 for WD for the beach utility. Can I have a motion, please?
Move it.
Second.
Question?
Question.
So, is this then going to be off the menu then? Is it out?
No. The purpose of doing this is if we wait two more weeks for the menu, we won't have a truck for the beach to open. So it's still in the discussion of the menu? Correct. It's still in the discussion. This way, if we buy it here and it's off the menu, this way it can go back into the general budget.
Okay.
Any further questions? Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Councilmember Warner?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes. Do you want to go back to that one that we separated from the consent before we get to all the rest?
Sure.
I don't care.
Resolution 2015-184, resolution authorizing a place-to-place transfer, expansion of premises of plenary consumption retail license 1303-33-047-008 for the AP 30 Property Holdings LLC. Can I have a motion to approve the resolution?
Move it.
Can I have a second?
I'll second it. Said let it die for a second.
Comments?
No comment.
Okay, roll call. Councilmember Clayton?
No.
Councilmember Kendall?
No.
Councilmember Warner?
No.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
No.
Mayor Moore?
No.
Resolution 2015-170, resolution of the mayor and city council of the city of Asbury Park authorizing the execution of a subsequent developers' agreement with 210 Fifth Avenue Venture Urban Renewal LLC. May I have a motion to approve the resolution?
Move it.
Second.
Questions? Roll call. Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Councilmember Warner?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution 2015-177, authorizing the issuance of a nonrecourse redevelopment area bonds of the city of Asbury Park in the aggregate principal amount not to exceed $1,250,000 for Block 1404 infrastructure project. May I have a motion to approve this resolution?
Move it.
Second.
Questions? Roll call. Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Councilmember Warner?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution 2015-178, declaring the city's official intent to reimburse expenditures for project costs from the proceeds of RAB bonds. Can I have a motion to accept the resolution, please?
So move.
Second.
Questions? Roll call. Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Councilmember Warner?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution 2015-189, resolution of the mayor and city council of the city of Asbury Park authorizing the issuance of new hotel liquor license and publication of notice thereof. May I have a motion to accept the resolution?
Move it.
Second.
Questions? Roll call. Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Councilmember Warner?
Yes.
Council... Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Sorry. Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution 2015-190, a resolution of the mayor and council of the city of Asbury Park acting as a redevelopment entity, authorizing an agreement for the construction and operation of intern surface parking lots on identified properties within the waterfront redevelopment area. May I have a motion to accept the resolution?
Move it.
Second.
Questions? Roll call. Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Councilmember Warner?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution 2015-191, a resolution of the mayor and council of the city of Asbury Park acting as a redevelopment entity, authorizing a lease agreement with Asbury Partners LLC for the installation of temporary restroom trailers on identified property within the waterfront redevelopment area. Can I have a motion to approve this resolution?
Move it.
Second.
Questions? Roll call. Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Councilmember Warner?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution 2015-192, resolution authorizing a payment payroll in an amount of $822,699.42. Can I have a motion to accept the resolution?
So move.
Second.
Questions? Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Councilmember Warner?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution 2015-193, resolution authorizing the payment of bills in the amount of $7,034,103.31. Can I have a motion to accept this resolution?
Move it.
Second.
Questions? Roll call. Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Councilmember Warner?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution 2015-194, authorizing appointments of Public Arts Committee. The people being appointed this evening on the Public Art Committee are Honorable Amy Quinn, Michael Sedano, Jen Hampton, James Vance, Andrew Paulin, Patrick Chavino, Donald Stein, and Malcolm Navias, all with the expiration date of December 31, 2015. May I have a motion to accept this?
Move it.
Second.
Questions?
I'm just going to make one comment. The Public Art Committee was actually a committee that's been around for a couple of years. Ninety percent of the people who were previously on it remain on it. We added one or two people who had reached out, Jen, who owns Parlor Gallery. It is an as-needed committee, meaning they don't meet on a regular basis, they meet as needed.
Roll call. Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Councilmember Warner?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution 2015-195, authorizing appointment Code Enforcement Quality of Life Advisory Committee, that one appointment, and I apologize for the last name, Terry Cuccinelli. Can I have a motion to accept the resolution?
Move it. Second.
Questions? Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Councilmember Warner?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes. And before you go on, could I just, it's just because we're appointing people to committees, this does not need a resolution. It's the mayor's appointment to the library board. Through the recodification, we found out the library board in Asbury Park has seven members. It could be increased to nine. They've been having trouble having forums and everything, so it's been decided to add two members to the library board. They're my appointment. So Janet Termsy will be appointed, and her date will go through 12/31/2019. And Anita Weiner will be appointed, and her date will go through 12/31/2018. Thank you.
Thank you. Continuing to Resolution 2015-196, resolution adopting the Monmouth County Home Consortium, FY 2014 to 2019, five-year strategy submission for housing and community development programs. May I have a motion to accept this resolution, please?
So move.
Second.
Questions? Roll call. Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Councilmember Warner?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution 2015-197, a resolution requesting a township devotion to temporary lift the existing no-left turn restriction from Wicco Pego Drive, traveling in the northern direction onto Bimblett Boulevard until the conclusion of the Sunset Bridge construction project. Can I have a motion to accept this resolution?
Move it.
Second.
Questions?
So, I mean, the only question I have, we're... How do we know they're going to say... They're not going to say yes to this, right?
We won't. They're not saying yes for that by us just picking up the phone and saying, will you? So hopefully this will get them off the dime and know that we're serious about it. We have a serious problem with traffic on Third and Fourth because of the closure of the bridge. We have a serious problem right now with Asbury Avenue being worked on, with Monmouth County, and Monmouth County rerouted people through this, and they didn't say boo hoo about it. And it wasn't people from Third and Fourth Avenue, it was people from Asbury, Third, Fourth, First, and Second, and Ocean Township said fine to the county because they're saying no to Ocean Township. because they're saying no to Ocean Township. So it's not like, eh, hi, neighbor.
Okay.
So we didn't want to do it this way, but we're forced to pass the resolution.
Any further questions? Roll call, Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Councilmember Warner?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution 2015-198, resolution, amending resolution 2015-84 regarding appointment labor council for the city of Asbury Park. Can I have a motion to accept this resolution?
Move it.
Second.
Questions? Roll call, Mayor, sorry, Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Councilmember Warner?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution 2015-199, resolution to return a surplus fire apparatus to Manus Quan Volunteer Fire Company Number Two. Can I have a motion to accept this?
Move it.
Second.
Questions? Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Councilmember Warner?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution 2015-200, a resolution to accept surplus fire apparatus from the Ocean Township District Number Two, Juana Masa Fire Company. Can I have a motion to accept this resolution?
Move it.
Did I butcher that? Any questions? Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Councilmember Warner?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution 2015-01, authorizing an agreement with Asbury Music Center LLC. Have a motion to accept this resolution?
Move it.
Second.
Questions?
So, just a statement here. So, another person, when I put the call out to, we're trying to expand the recreation program to arts, music, Surfing with Maryland, things like that. Another person who responded to that call was John at the Lake House, and he already has an existing program in Hope Academy, as well as at the Boys and Girls Club. So, we're going to be working with him to try to get more of Asbury into his programs at the Lake House.
Any further comments? Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Councilmember Warner?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution 2015-202, it's a resolution approving agreement with Jersey Professional Management. Have a motion to accept that resolution?
Move it.
Second. I think it's one of these. Second.
This was added on a drawing.
Okay, yes.
Yes.
Questions? Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Councilmember Warner?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
We are now on ordinances, first reading and introduction. Ordinance 2015-05, an ordinance amending and supplementing Chapter 30 entitled Land Development Regulations of the Revised General Ordnances of the City of Asbury Park, New Jersey, in order to establish a new section thereof to be known as Article 7 entitled Request to Amend a Redevelopment Plan: Application Procedure and Ask Grow Establishment. May I have a motion to introduce this ordinance?
Move it.
Second.
All right, are there any questions? Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Councilmember Warner?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
The public hearing for this ordinance is scheduled for June 10, 2015. Next is ordinance 2015-17, an ordinance amending and supplementing chapter, or I'm sorry, section 14-15 entitled Straight Performers as Chapter 4 entitled General Licensing of the Revised General Ordnances of the City of Asbury Park, New Jersey. May I have a motion to introduce this ordinance?
Move it.
Second.
Questions? Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Councilmember Warner?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
The public hearing is scheduled for May 27, 2015. Ordinance 2015-18, an ordinance governing care, maintenance, security, and upkeep of vacant and abandoned properties in foreclosure, and amending and supplementing Chapter 13 entitled Property Maintenance of the Revised General Ordnances of the City of Asbury Park, New Jersey. May I have a motion to introduce?
Move it.
Second.
Questions? Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Councilmember Warner?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Public hearing for this matter is scheduled on June 10, 2015. Ordinance 2015-21, an ordinance setting the salary and compensation of employees for the city of Asbury Park who are members of the AFSCME Union. Have a motion to introduce?
Move it.
Second.
Questions? Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Councilmember Warner?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Public hearing is scheduled for May 27, 2015. Ordinance 2015-22, an ordinance setting the salary or compensation of employees of the city of Asbury Park who are members of the IFPTE Union Local 196. Motion to introduce?
Move it.
Second.
Questions? Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Councilmember Warner?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Public hearing is scheduled for May 27, 2015. Ordinance 2015-23, an ordinance setting the salary and compensation of non-union employees for the city of Asbury Park. Have a motion to introduce?
Move it.
Second.
Questions? Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Councilmember Warner?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Public hearing is scheduled for May 27, 2015. Ordinance 2015-
Yes.
Councilmember Warner?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Dollars, and the quicker we move on this, the quicker, so move that one up.
Fine, we'll move the public hearing to the May 27, 2015 meeting.
Thank you.
Ordinance 2015-25, an ordinance amending and supplementing Chapter 7 traffic of the Revised General Ordnances of the City of Asbury Park, New Jersey. Can I have a motion to introduce?
Move it.
Second.
Questions?
Just so, this is the updated parking that we talked about on Monday night?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Councilmember Warner?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Wait, wait, can I, is it too late? Can I, did we, we talked about spaces, we added 16 spaces, heck.
Yes.
Okay.
Public hearing is scheduled for May 27, 2015. We are on second reading now, public hearing. Ordinance 2015-11, establishing metering parking for the municipal parking lot at One Municipal Plaza and in the Bangs Avenue Parking Garage, and amending and supplementing Chapter 7 traffic of the Revised General Ordnances of the City of Asbury Park, New Jersey accordingly. Have a motion to open the meeting to the public?
Move it.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
At this time, I'm going to open up the, this ordinance to the public. Any public comment? Motion to close?
It's, Rita, it's metering the municipal lot. You want to say something?
Second.
So the only thing, Tony, I would say is that we absolutely are going to have signage explaining, okay.
We'll have the signage out there. All right, and we'll have the one meter on the island.
Okay.
All right, and everybody will be directed to the, the one meter.
And DPWS asked about the signage, and we suggested they reach out to the parking committee before it be ordered, if you guys.
Okay, good.
Like the site.
Right, because it's going to have hours of operation, hours of enforcement.
And there's going to be, and there's going to be quite a few all over, so if you don't want to order them, and somebody doesn't like them, so the quicker you guys get together, the quicker we get ordering, the quicker we get.
Okay.
There you go.
All right, motion to close public hearing?
Move it.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, now I need a motion to adopt the ordinance.
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Councilmember Warner?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Next is ordinance 2015-11. This was originally ordinance 2015-11, but it was double-numbered, so we changed it to an A. So, ordinance of amending salaries in certain employees with the city of Asbury Park, Monmouth County, New Jersey. Have a motion to open the meeting to the public?
Move it.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
This time, the meeting is open to the public for anybody who wishes to comment on ordinance 2015-11A. Hearing non, can I have a motion to close the public portion?
Move it.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Now can I have a motion to adopt ordinance 2015-11A?
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Councilmember Warner?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Ordinance 2015-12, an ordinance of the city of Asbury Park authorizing the execution of a financial agreement with 210 Fifth Avenue Urban Renewals and the granting of a tax exemption. Can I have a motion to open the public hearing, please?
Move it.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any comments on ordinance 2015-12? Please state your name and spell your last name for the record.
Gerald Scorano Longbranch. Could you better explain what the tax exemption is? Because I didn't read it, and I didn't know about it, but could you explain it? Because I'm personally against all tax exemptions, so I'd like to know how this one's going to slip in.
So Jennifer, just introduce yourself.
Can I see the paper?
Good evening, mayor and council, Jennifer Cridio from the-
We can't hear you back there. We're a little deaf.
She should sit on the other side.
You can put her on the other side, that's fine.
Well, it has to go on cable TV so people can hear you talk.
Move it.
No, and we don't know your name either.
She's got it, Jerry.
Jerry, give her a minute. Give her a minute.
You didn't spell yours, and we didn't yell at you.
I don't know who she is.
My name is Jennifer Cridio. I'm a partner with McManus Southern Valens, where Special Redevelopment Council to the city of Asbury Park. The financial agreement that's being considered this evening is with 210- 210 Fifth Ave Venture Urban Renewal, which is an affiliate of Asbury Partners, which is the master developer for the waterfront redevelopment area. It pertains to the rehabilitation of the former Salvation Army site into a boutique hotel containing approximately 110 hotel rooms, which has previously received planning board approval. This evening, the council also voted on a subsequent developer agreement that would further describe the development of the hotel at the site. It has, the tax exemption has a 30-year term, and it is, there are a schedule of payments that are attached to the agreement, which is an exhibit to the ordinance, that will be made over the life of the transaction.
Okay, I'd like to ask the council, is there anything in, now that we're giving a tax abatement, like the New York City ads say, what is the public going to give in return? Are they going to have a quota on how many locals get hired for their renovation? And is it going to be a quota for the next 30 years on how many local people work in the new hotel? And if they don't get any of that, then they don't get a tax abatement. Because if you watch the commercials on TV, that's what the new election's all about.
So, two things, because Jerry, I'm with you on the tax abatements. This is a different structure than, so let's think about the VIVE, right? The VIVE, the way the VIVE worked was, there was two parts of a special assessment. Part of it went to pay for infrastructure, and part of it went to pay for the municipal portion of the taxes that were being, it's just a restructuring of the municipal taxes, we still got our portion. But the part that went to the bond, to the bond to pay for the infrastructure, was paid over the long term by the tax, by the taxpayer. This project, both streams of revenue are coming from the developer, from the hotel's revenue. Because it's different, we don't, you don't have taxpayers at a hotel, right? So it's like a different, a different structure. So it's, both of the streams are coming from, from the hotel, so there's no real, it's a little, it's more like two special assessments than a pilot, even though it's a pilot. It's, I like to think of it as two special assessments. Some of it goes to pay for the infrastructure, that comes from the hotel. The other part that comes from the hotel goes directly to the city to compensate for, you know, we don't know what the potential taxes are and aren't, right? Because it has no value right now. So that's where, that's where the two streams are coming from. So, in my estimation, and I'm not a financial analyst, this is a vastly different deal than the pilots on the VIVE and K-Havanian.
Okay.
And a better one for the city. So to your second point, we're in discussion, and we've been talking about it for a while, how best to work with developers, right? We know there's going to be jobs at this hotel, and we want to prepare our workforce for those jobs. So, the model that seems to be the most effective in town is what the Kula Cafe has done. So we are in the process of trying to work out a similar model to prepare, and we have a little bit of time, because it's not going to happen overnight, but to prepare our workforce to fit into those jobs. But that's just in the beginning of this.
Okay, I wanted to add, Joe, because I like your interpretation, but it's not only for the residents here, but the workers that come to work at the hotel. If they live here, they will become active citizens and voters, and therefore they'll put more pressure on their tax abatement. I really want something in the agreement that says 20% of your workforce will live in Asbury Park. Let them move out of West Long Branch, Titten Falls, Ocean Township, let them buy or rent in Asbury Park, if they're going to work at the hotel. If you don't do it, you're just giving taxpayer dollars to the other rich community. Get some of those people to come into town and have a vested interest. And if they can't hire people from, that don't want to move here, then they'll have to hire underskilled people here to fill the educated jobs. We want to bring more people in here with a paycheck, and that's one way to make it happen. And the other thing is, everybody complains, construction jobs. You don't need an education to carry lumber up to the 10th floor, you don't need an education to sweep the floor, you don't need an education to be a flagman. Just make the rules, and then I have no problem making my suggestion. That's all I'm asking. Look out for the people who were here before they came here to rediscover Asbury Park, and the people that are going to work here, let them buy into our community instead of taking the money to the other rich community around us. That's all I'd like to say. Thank you.
Lori Ross, West Side Community Center, 115 DeWitt Avenue. Couple quick questions with regards to this tax abatement. Did the council ever consider, or were they given an opportunity to consider a luxury tax to offset some of the ramifications of this to offset some of the ramifications of this tax abatement? For example, Atlantic City, you pay a luxury tax. If you go to a hotel, even for one night, you pay a luxury tax. Those luxury taxes go to the Casino Reinvestment Development Authority, which has resulted in millions of dollars that have gone throughout the state to include more. So my question is, to offset any issues with the tax abatement to include especially reduced revenue for the town in that 30-year period, was there a consideration of a luxury tax on those units that will be built at the Salvation Army? As well as, with regards to the contract and the local ordinances for local labor, who's following that to make sure that the residents here get some of those jobs in the build-out of that project? Who's enforcing that? So there's a concern, I guess, with many in the town, stakeholders, residents, non-residents, whatever, regarding this whole tax abatement exemption. Again, has the council been given an opportunity to find out about what other towns do with regards to luxury taxes, a way to generate revenue? I know many, if not all of us here, go to a hotel. And we are paying that throughout the state to include in especially Atlantic City.
I'm sorry, you done?
Yes.
Asbury Park already has a hotel tax. And the Berkeley pays it, the Empress pays it, and they'll pay it. And the estimates on the hotel tax are over $100,000 a year, additional revenue coming into the city besides the taxes. So the luxury tax you're talking about is already in place and it's estimated to bring in over $100,000 a year.
Which is not a significant amount. But was there any discussion on increasing that luxury tax?
No.
Could there be a conversation about that? Again, if I'm going to buy into Asbury Park, want to be by the waterfront, I pay it everywhere else. So perhaps there could be a consideration to generate revenue because you know what? People are paying $500 a night in Atlantic City during the summer. I think that we offer a lot of things as well. And I think that that certainly should be taken into consideration. Because one of the things that I understand is that the city does have a tremendous deficit. And to reduce that deficit, you have to generate revenue. And perhaps folks coming out of town, having the amenities, where the folks here don't even have the ability to pay for a $15 hamburger, I think that that should be part of every deal that is being done. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Joe Pepe, DLA Drive. A lot of people are talking about getting the citizens of Asbury working on these projects. We don't really have to recreate the wheel here. If we look at the Davis Bacon structure, and I can get that to you guys. We use it in a lot of the state programs when there's state money being used for development. And Davis Bacon kind of covers all of that. How the workers have to be paid, when they have to be paid and all that. And I'll email it out to you guys tomorrow.
Thanks, Joe.
Thank you.
Hi. I'm also against pilot programs and tax abatements. This has been going on since 2002. I don't- and the more ratables we get, the higher taxes go. I don't understand what's going on. It doesn't seem like it's benefiting us. Yeah, there's a lot of people here. But the people that live here are paying high taxes. So how come you have to give them a business, a hotel, a tax abatement? It is a hotel.
Luxury.
Luxury.
It's a boutique hotel.
How come you have to give them a tax abatement? I mean, look, I think we have the most pilot programs in the state of New Jersey in one little mile.
Mr. Mayor, if I may answer that. As part of the statutory requirements, the entity filed an application for long-term tax exemption. They provided the city with a significant amount of financial information as to their costs, their projected revenues, their projected expenses. And the municipality, after reviewing that information in consultation with their financial advisor, determined that financial assistance was appropriate in order to make this project feasible at the waterfront.
This is a 30-year tax abatement. Is that right?
That's correct. 30 years.
Maybe if you just did five years, people would accept it better. And how does Asbury Partners always come up in the conversation? Are they still involved?
It's the name of the master developer.
So they're still involved?
It's the name of a corporation.
Oh, it's the name of the corporation.
There's many LLCs.
It gets confusing because when-
This is where what we're talking about now is 210 Fifth Avenue Urban Renewal LLC.
What would happen if you voted no?
The city would probably go broke real quick then, get back on its feet. You talk about like, what do these tax abatements do? Well, you know, and I was in the same shoes as you once, and I questioned myself. What does this hotel do? Will leave the Salvation Army abandoned the way it was and then I Star bringing in maybe $40,000 a year or else we'll take in $200,000 a year in taxes. So geez, we just make five times the amount of taxes. We're getting $100,000 a year in luxury tax. We're putting many, many people to work. And it's not costing like- there's no drain on any- the police, the fire, the school system, anything. It's a hotel. What drain is there on any department? It's a hotel that's going to generate money, generate interest for other people to come and stay in Asbury Park, see how great it is, and maybe buy one of these condos that are again, going to get an abatement and go to eventually get on the tax rolls and get us off transitional aid. But right now, you're right, we're on transitional aid. It's $1.9 million. We can either say no to all the abatements and raise all your taxes. And then you'll say, you raised my taxes, $2 million. So I mean, there's no like middle ground. I mean, what do you want us to do?
It's not your fault. But there's been 12 years here. We're talking about 2002. 13 years.
And in the 12 years, we've seen one project finished by I-Star, and that's the VIVE. And they're generating like a quarter million dollars of tax revenue to help the city get off this state aid. The next one going on will be Hovanian. Now, the hotel will probably be on before Hovanian. And they're going to generate all this money and create jobs. I personally think it's a good deal.
And just for the record, Rita, the days of blanket voting yes on these abatements or pilots are over, right? We put requirements for work. We put requirements for people to do lessons. We are developing a workforce requirement. So not only you can't say, well, you don't have the 20 people in Asbury Park who know how to do whatever construction that we need them to do, so we're going outside of Asbury Park. Our- not only did all the council members go through these agreements, and the city manager, and our attorney, we also have our tax assessor giving us his recommendation and making corrections to this agreement to ensure that taxpayers are not getting screwed on this. We have our auditor going through this and ensuring all things that didn't happen before. I don't know what happened before, but I can assure you that the level of scrutiny that these agreements get and the requirements that we're not only putting on developers, but much smaller developers who are now using abatements and pilots in Asbury Park is completely different than it was five years ago.
Right, and the question, I think, with every- it's a judgment call on all of the pilots. Either you run the pilot or you don't run the pilot and the development doesn't happen. So the line is, would the development happen without the pilot? And the judgment call on this one- and listen, you know I was there at that mic saying the same thing two years ago. The judgment call on this one, I think, is pretty clear-cut. On maybe on the residential, it's tighter. This one is not, not close. It's not going to happen without this. And it's going to benefit the city because we're going to be getting tax income. And on top of that, the revenue from the hotels going to pay for the infrastructure as well. So this one, Rita, I'm-
Yeah, but 30 years is another generation you're talking about. Most of us won't even be here.
The money's coming in for 30 years, for the infrastructure and from the hotel. It's not like we're not getting money from them. We're getting the money. So for 30 years, that thing could sit there. And we get no money.
You're not getting full taxes. You got to take the 40% off for the infrastructure. Did you forget about the bond? The $50 million bond?
It's a separate program. That's a residential program. This is a, this is a new, a different model because it's a commercial. So in that one, that's right. And that's what I was saying before. In that one, the special assessment that pays for the infrastructure came from the bond that came from the taxpayers. This infrastructure payment comes from the hotel. That's the difference.
I don't know. Say what you want, but 12, 13 years, taxes go up. When we had nothing here, nothing, the board, the boardwalkers boarded up. You know what we owed? $5 million. What do we owe now? 72 million? That's my answer.
Good afternoon, Mayor, City Council. My name is John Owens. I have a couple of things I want to say. In the rebuilding of Asbury Park, first of all, I would like to see some of the young men, the middle-aged men, have a fresh choice of the job. The union job, working job. That's the first thing I would like to see in Asbury. The first chance they get in Asbury Park. You know, it's not that many. So give them the first choice. That is one of the things that people in Asbury Park do deserve. That's one of the things I would like to see. Secondly, I would like to speak on the sewer bill. I spoke to the mayor some time ago. I spoke to the man Jeff who works over there. When you get behind your sewer bill, you house go with the lead, you got to pay a double tax to get it up. And I think this is one of the things should never been. And this is one of the things that should be in- wait, let me finish. Let me finish. Let me finish, please. Let me finish. Let me finish, please. Let me finish, then you can speak, all right?
Your comments are limited to the ordinance.
This is not the public session. This is not the public session. Right now-
Okay, okay, okay. Well, I want to say this before I go. Can I say this before I go?
You've got 30 seconds. Go.
Okay. I'd like to see this eliminated for the people who get behind the sewer bill and they put your property up for lead, you got to pay all that money back. A double tax that you had to pay. It's penalty tax, you know? And it's, to me, it's degraded to the seniors who live in Asbury who try to own something, you know? And I think this shouldn't have never been, but it should be eliminated. I spoke to you, Mayor, before, and I think really your council and all should move on this. You know, because there are some people who really just can't pay it up today. But it should be some consideration. That is one of the things I think the city council and you, Mayor, should work on there. And thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Owens. Anybody else like to be heard on this ordinance? Motion to close.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Have a motion to adopt ordinance 2015-12?
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Councilmember Warner?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Ordinance 2015-13. Ordinance of the city of Asbury Park and the county of Malma. State of New Jersey providing for a special assessment of the cost of certain wastewater, stormwater, roadway, streetscape, utility and other infrastructure improvements on Block 1401, Lots 3-7, 10 and 11 within Asbury Park waterfront redevelopment area and establishing a mechanism of payment of the cost thereof. Have a motion to open this ordinance up to the public, please?
Move it.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Hi, Louise Murray, 1604 Grand Avenue.
Louise, do you want an explanation first, or?
All right, yeah, I'll take it.
Okay.
This ordinance provides for the imposition of a special assessment on the former Salvation Army property in the amount of $100,000 annually. The $100,000 will be pledged to the repayment of redevelopment area bonds that will finance public infrastructure in the area surrounding the hotel. The only party that will be paying a special assessment under this ordinance is the owner of the hotel. No other parties.
Okay. And again, he'll have 30 years to pay $1,250,000.
That's correct.
30 years, quarterly.
Correct.
Okay. So we have another tax abatement or whatever you want to call it. A nice little 30-years period to pay quarterly $1,250,000 for an opera- for something that they will, in fact, profit from, obviously, from the hotel. And we sit around and wait. I'll be long gone, probably at Mount Calvary, but whatever. I mean, I still find a lot of this hardship on the citizens of Asbury Park. I mean, we just go along and go along and- just to get along, it seems like. So anyway.
It's important to note that the stream of payments under this ordinance are going to finance infrastructure. That's going to be public infrastructure. Roads, sewers, water curbing, so-
To what, excuse me, I don't mean to interrupt you. To what extent? I mean, to where? To, to just, just in their vicinity, just to-
It is going to be adjacent to and surrounding the project. That is true. But it is otherwise infrastructure that the city would undertake with public dollars. So the hotel is bearing the cost of the special assessment. And the funds that are generated by the special assessment are being used for public infrastructure.
I just don't understand. When people come in to build, I mean, if you were to go build a house yourself and you chose a piece of property or whatever, it wouldn't be your neighbors that would have to, you know, contribute to your infrastructure. Whatever, if you found you had a problem with something. It's your responsibility. And I still can't wrap my head around all of this.
And here, the hotel is the party paying for the infrastructure. No one else.
Yes, 30 years with four quarterly payments. Okay, $1,250,000. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Lori Ross, Westside Community Center 115 Dewitt Avenue. Quick question with regards to the cost projections of the infrastructure. So it's anticipated that it'll be $1.250 million for those infrastructure improvements?
Not to exceed. I think that it's probably going to be closer to 1.1. But it's not to exceed 1.25.
What if cost projections are just what they are? They can always fluctuate, given some unknowns. What happens if those cost projections are fundamentally wrong and it exceeds that amount?
The master developer has been investing millions in public infrastructure in the waterfront redevelopment area, far more than is going to be financed by this portion of, by this special assessment and this bond. So they, the master developer, will install all necessary public infrastructure with respect to this project, whether or not it exceeds this $1.25 million.
But they're using our access, the city's access to capital through the bonds, correct?
It's not the city's access to capital. The city is acting as a conduit. There is no municipal credit on these bonds. There is absolutely no pledge of the city's general obligation or full faith in credit. These are purely conduit bonds. And their bond council is here and can speak.
Who's paying the bond council salary?
The cost for bond council comes out of the transaction fees at issuance. It's the common way that it's done.
So it's not the city?
No, it will be paid from bond proceeds. And those bonds will be repaid with the assessment that's being paid by the hotel.
Now, the other question, has there ever been any consideration about getting other public money? Maybe federal grants or low-interest loans or something so that the city is totally out of it with regards to that?
I can't speak to that.
So there's nobody at the city looking, the city engineering, looking at potential other sources of funding?
Well, on this one, we don't need it because the hotel's paying.
Through bonding.
Right.
And so there's absolutely no cost to the city?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Hello, Council, Jerry Scranno, Long Branch. Now, I have a question. It's not a trick question. I think only John will know it. But how many people in this room on the council know the lot and block of their home address? How many people know the lot and block? So why do you have an ordinance with lot and block? It also should be known, commonly known as 210 Fifth Avenue. So from now on, can all ordinances have commonly known as the street address? Is that going to be too hard to do in the future? Our city clerk? Acknowledgement?
It's a fair request. It will be done.
And the lawyer, okay? But if you want to confuse the audience, that's a great way to do it. The other thing is, will there be a guarantee, because that happened in Ocean Plaza in Long Island, when the hotel goes broke, as they may do to, to not pay the debtors, is there a bond to make sure that this $1.2 million is paid off? I believe if you're going to give them a tax abatement, they should pay for the insurance policy, so when they keep clear bankruptcy seven years from now, all the bonds paid off. We don't lose one dime. That's what I would like. And if they sell the hotel to somebody else, all tax abatements are off, we want to be paid before. Just like they're going to walk away with a bucket full of money, we want to be paid with a bucket full of money. And that's the way all tax abatements should be. If you sell the project, you lose the tax abatement. That should be the new policy. Thank you very much for listening, Jimmy.
Thank you.
Just for clarity, Mr. Mayor, if I may, the, the city will not...
Could you talk a little louder down?
The city will not lose any money. This is not...
Are you going to personally guarantee it yourself?
Jerry, let her finish.
Okay, I'm just...
Cut it off.
I'm sorry.
There's no municipal credit behind this bond. If, in your scenario, the special assessment was not paid, that's part of the bondholder's risk, and that's part of what they are purchasing when they purchase that bond. The city has no obligation to pay these bonds.
But someone's going to have to be paid when there's no money. It takes a while to go bankrupt. There'll be a dry spell in between the money flowing. There should be a safety valve that says, you lose everything if you don't pay. Like when you don't pay your mortgage, everything kicks into action. The mortgage, the bank can start asking for all the money at one time. We should have the same kind of thing with them.
But Jerry, you're saying the city isn't, the city...
No, I'm just saying...
Say that one more time.
The city is not under any obligation to pay the bonds that are secured by this special assessment.
Okay.
The special assessment is required to be paid. It is able to be enforced in the same way as taxes, through a municipal tax sale, the sale of a certificate to a tax sale investor that can foreclose on the property if the hotel does not pay the special assessment. But under no circumstances is the city required to pay.
Okay, now what about if they sell the property? Can that not go with it? They don't get the tax abatements when they sell the property.
Both the tax exemption and the special assessment would follow the property, and, and that's a common feature in...
I know it's a common feature, but we want to be special. We're Asbury Park.
Such a limitation would probably make, in my opinion, the, a financial agreement or a special assessment unfinancable.
I know you have a lot of hope.
I just want to ask, who's the bond attorney?
Mr. Cantalupo from Archer and Greiner.
Who?
John Cantalupo from Archer and Greiner.
Mr. Scotland?
No.
No.
Who?
John Cantalupo from Archer and Greiner.
Oh, you're the bond attorney?
Yes.
Oh, I just wanted to know who that was.
Motion to close.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Have a motion to adopt?
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Councilmember Warner?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Ordinance 2015-14, an ordinance authorizing the city of Asbury Park to grant a five-year abatement for property designated as block 2404, lot 4.02, to be subdivided from block 24.04, lot 4, and authorizing the mayor to execute the attached agreement.
Move it.
Move it.
Second.
This time the motion, the meeting opens for public comment for ordinance 2015-14. Anybody like to speak?
Louise Murray. Could you just explain that to me? He's, he's expanding his, his business and he wants a tax abatement. Is that what I remembered in PIS? How does that work, please?
So, Fred, you want to do it, or...
Yes, this is an expansion of the lake house, which is currently on Lake Avenue and Asbury Park to the adjacent property. You, you may know this property. It's the only one along that block that has not been rehabilitated. And the lake house is now going to be expanding to this block and lot, which is going to be subdivided from the existing block and lot. And in order to make the project feasible, the applicant has applied for this five-year abatement, which will allow them to proceed with the project.
All right, would you explain what he's expanding? He's not expanding the building, the outer portion of the building, is he not? Is he just expanding inside, like he's making internal renovations? I'm trying to visualize this, Fred.
I know there, there were renderings that have previously been provided to the city that include improvements to the exterior facade of the building as well as clearly the, the interior of the building as well.
But overall, what I'm saying is the building itself stays intact?
Correct.
The outside building, okay.
Correct. There'll be improvements to the exterior facade.
All right, a few improvements, whatever, because it's brick, if I recall, and whatever.
With the whitewash on.
Yeah, okay. So his expansion is going to be mostly inside, whether he'd have more rooms for the music lessons or whatever, 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 right? It's, that's kind of like where he's going, inside the building. The...
Correct. And this previously came before the mayor and council for an amendment to the Central Business District Redevelopment Plan to allow for the use at that property.
Okay.
Because lessons, music lessons, was not something that was originally part of the CBD.
So how much more square footage is he going to obtain, do you know?
I don't have that information.
I don't remember what the square footage is.
So here again, I mean, I think it's great, kids are learning how to, you know, utilize their time and, and create their talents and what have you, but here again, tax abatement, and he's benefiting from the extra, you know, mileage. I mean, he's getting the extra mileage. Okay?
So this one, just before you, because this one, I had the, you know, the same question, and the way this one is structured, this comes from the state, and this is structured for residential properties, it's like if you redo your bathroom, you put a, or you put a bathroom in downstairs, you automatically get this five-year tax abatement to offset the cost of construction while you improve, when you improve your home. So after five years, we're going to tax you at a higher rate, but we, we want you to improve your home, so our values go up.
But...
That's what it's, let me just finish. So that's what it's structured after. The difference here is that when it's a commercial property...
Right.
It comes in front of, in front of the council at our discretion to decide if we want to do that five year. So a couple of things that I like about it. One is it's only five years. Two, again, with any of these, you have to make the decision. Does it go forward without it? And if it doesn't go forward, then the city will lose money. If it goes forward with the pilot, you'll, you'll make money, and it's short-term. And this is an organization that is, like we said, Boys and Girls Club, the charter school, and then it's going to be working with the Recreation Department to enhance the programming for our youth. So this again was one that, it's modeled after the state. It's not very far from what is automatic on application for residential. It's just an extension of that residential permit for five years in commercial properties.
Right. Well, again, like with the five-year residential, that's great, you know, but that, that, that would come back to you when the time comes that you sell your house or whatever the case may be. But this particular thing, it allows him to teach these children, which is great. I, I'm all for that. I mean, music and art and all that. But he's still, he's going to be making a profit on, and it's working out for him, you know, it's a win-win for him. That's all I'm saying. And we got a five-year tax abatement that we're looking at.
But the numbers, when we looked at them, so, and we thought that, it was back in January, if you look, there's three sets, right? There's how it is now, how it is with the abatement, how it is without the abatement. And you could throw out how it is without the abatement, because it doesn't go forward without the abatement. So you look at these numbers, the city gets more money. Just like...
Well, it's nice to know that the residents are helping him out with the tax abatement.
Just like they're helping the other residents out when you do your bathroom. This one doesn't scare me as much as the other ones.
Skelly, I'm here again for a quick comment. I would like to see something done to the West Side. I would like to see the council and all the people who have authority to put more time and interest in the West Side Community Center. They've been there for a long time. It wasn't time to use very, very sternly, but now it's just sitting there, and it could be used for a very good purpose on the West Side. It could be used for many things. And I'd like to see the city council and the people who are in charge to get involved in the West Side Community Center and get it going. And it can be done, okay?
All right, Mr. Owens, I don't, I don't mean to cut you off again. All right, we appreciate your comments about the West Side. I think that everybody would like to see that, but we need to limit our comments, all right, to this one ordinance.
Well, I'm limiting my comment. My comment is very short. Rita Maran, another guy, a really long one.
We need to...
My comment is very short. Look at me with that.
It's important.
But that's what I want to say, all right?
Thank you, Mr. Owens.
Hello, Council, Jerry Scranton, Long Island. Though could it be read into the minute of the address and the company that this is going to benefit the tax abatement? And then, what I bring up again, every tax abatement should come with a flag that says, we need to know how many local employees are going to be working on the project and how many employees are going to be working at the site. I believe Moonshuck, a lot of people live in town, but it's just that I would like it to be part of the mainstream. Though could you read into the record the address and the name of the company that's going with this ordinance? Thank you.
The, the only thing I'll say to this, Jerry, is that this agreement has a parallel agreement that provides lessons to 35 kids in Asbury, lessons to 35 kids in Asbury Park over the five years of the abatement. Okay, that, that is a parallel agreement to this agreement. So I'm reading that into the record, as you say.
At the property location, just to answer your question, is 621 Lake Avenue and its Asbury Music Center LLC?
Commonly known as the lake house.
Okay.
Hi, we're talking about a, a very successful business, and I'm very happy that he's successful, because I know a lot of people that go there. So why do we have to give him a tax abatement if he's already successful and he wants to expand his business? That's all he's doing. He is successful, and I'm very happy for him, but I don't think he deserves a tax abatement if he's making money. He's already there. It's not like he's starting a new business.
For the same reason...
He decided to buy that building. That's his problem. It's not ours.
And this one, Rita, would be the same reason we would give you a tax abatement to redo your kitchen. You have a beautiful house, you want to make it more beautiful. We're going to give you a break for five years, because in the long run, after five years, you're going to be taxed more for the rest of the life of your house, and that's going to help the city. And in the meantime, we're still going to be getting more money. So that's, that's, that's why.
But you're not getting the full amount.
And if you didn't give you that part of your abatement, you wouldn't redo your kitchen.
You're, you're, you're supposed to get the most money you can. When you run a business like I did for 22 years, you think I was going to give people breaks?
No.
Well, I just want to tell you that. I mean, like, it's ridiculous. The guy is a success. I'm happy for him. He's just expanding. He doesn't get a tax abatement for that. He wants to buy a building. That's his problem.
Maybe without the abatement, he couldn't afford to buy the building.
You're making everybody's problem.
Well, we're trying, it's the one blighted building on the lot that nobody else was stepping up to. And maybe without that abatement, maybe without the abatement, we wouldn't have the showroom. Maybe without the abatement, we wouldn't have his original building. And it's world-known, and it's been a success, and you're right, but I don't think he's making the type of money you think he is or else... Yeah, but whatever. Motion to close.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion to adopt ordinance 2015, uh, 2015-14.
Move it. Second.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Councilmember Warner?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Ordinance 2015-15, an ordinance establishing a 30-minute time limit for three parking spaces along Prospect Avenue and Bangs Avenue in the city of Asbury Park, New Jersey, amending and supplementing the revised general ordinances of the city of Asbury Park accordingly. Motion to open a meeting to the public.
Move it.
Second.
All in favor? Any public comment? Motion to close?
Move it.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Have a motion to adopt ordinance 2015-15.
Move it. Second.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Councilmember Warner?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Ordinance 2015-16, an ordinance amending and supplementing section 4-9 entitled Display of Merchandise in Public Areas, Outdoor Sidewalk Cafes of Chapter 4 entitled General Licensing of the Revised General Ordances of the City of Asbury Park, New Jersey. Have a motion to open it, ordinance 2015.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any public comment? Motion to close?
Move it.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I need to do a motion to adopt.
Okay.
Motion to adopt ordinance 2015-16. Second.
Second.
Councilmember Clayton? Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Councilmember Warner?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes. I shouldn't do this, and I should quit while I'm ahead, but I'm not smart enough. So I'm going to do it. This is like the second reading of all these. We had multiple discussions on all of these, where people could have come to the microphone during the discussions, going back to January, February, March, and then we had the first read, where people could have asked questions. Then Monday, we had a workshop session where people could have asked questions. There were some good questions tonight and good suggestions, which I appreciate, and constructive criticism is always appreciated. I agree with you, Jerry, on the addresses, anything like that. But I wish from here on out, maybe we don't wait to like the second reading, because then it may be too late to like change things. So if we address it at, when we're talking about things, we address it at the first reading, we address it at the workshop meeting, we address, and everybody could have addressed public session on the workshop meeting, any of these things, because they were all listed up on the website, so everybody knew they were coming tonight. I would just suggest it may be easier for everybody out there to, you know, bring up the concerns earlier, and you may like wake me up and say, damn, you know, you're right, Jerry, and you may switch my vote on something. But not on these tonight, but I'm just saying in the future, that could happen. And it's easier for us, I think, if you do that earlier.
And the only other thing I would say is every single council meeting has been taped. Every workshop session goes up before the Wednesday night meeting. So you can check, it may not be on the TV by that quick, because it takes us longer to upload it, but it's up on the website Monday before Wednesday, so you have an opportunity to review it and get to us. And all the first readings of these were, I mean, everything's been taped since 2015, since we've taken office. Every meeting's been taped.
I'll become a better president. No, 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 and, but again...
Come on Monday.
Do what?
But we tape it, Reid, and we put it up before Wednesday.
I can't help it, people don't come on Monday. We, we did that so they could come in, if not, they can watch it on AP-TV, and then they can, everybody knows I have a listed phone number, they can pick up the phone and say, hey, John, you've lost your mind voting on this. And I'll say, okay.
Motion to adjourn. Move it. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Boy, he needs a job.